Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, May 8, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Percy?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes, and I believe there are none for this week to approve. Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda? Next up are presentations and public input. And we have a presentation as our ongoing series in Examine Urbana. And this one will be on energy and the environment, and that's Scott Tess, who doesn't even get a chance to sit down.
So, thank you once again for allowing us to go through each chapter of Examine Urbana. We've only got one left after this one. This is energy and the environment. Next week, we'll be housing with Nick Olson. So Scott Tess has graciously, quote-un-quotes volunteered to do this for us, and we'll let Scott handle it. Thanks, Scott.
So you all got the overview of the Examiner Bana, excuse me, the Examiner Bana effort, I think, last week, or at a previous meeting, anyway. So what I thought I'd do is have Lilly drive the website a little bit, and I will narrate a brief summary, a 10-minute summary over the top of it. So in thinking about, you know, the top-level bucket, and there's a million ways, a million different keywords we could have chosen, but we chose energy and the environment, in part because the energy aspect, the renewable energy, the global warming aspect of environmental protection looms so large in our minds today. But we wanted to start with a little bit of background here. Urbana has been engaging in different environmental protection activities for decades. We are one of the first curbside recycling systems in the state of Illinois. That's been going on for decades. We have a landscape recycling center, which has been operating for decades. Just touching on the energy here, one of our top-level, big-impact renewable energy efforts is the purchase of renewable energy credits through municipal electric aggregation. We're going to be talking and working on, you know, the stormwater aspect, both in terms of just maintaining our stormwater assets, but also in terms of dealing with a wetter climate. One of the expectations with an increase in global warming is that this county is going to get more intense rainfall events. We're going to average more rain overall throughout the year, but that isn't going to be evenly spread out. It's going to come in the form of more intense rainfall events. So we want our stormwater system to be able to handle that. Fortunately, we, you know, with our urging, although they knew they wanted to do it for years, the state climatologist several years ago updated the design storm standards. That's, you know, the standards that cities reference when they require developers to manage a certain amount of stormwater for new development. So we're well-positioned there. Moving on to energy and the environment, there's a bullet point list here that Lilly's going to come to, and it says, "We work to develop renewable energy in four ways in Urbana." I'm going to throw in a fifth there. One is, as I mentioned, the purchase of renewable energy credits through the municipal electric aggregation program. Another is actually through installing renewable energy assets at city-owned facilities. We have a very small solar array, not this one in the photo here. We have a very small solar array that powers the arbor shop. With the development of two new fire stations, I'm hopeful that we will have renewable energy assets geothermal and also, you know, under the building and solar on top of the building at those two facilities as well. We also have 5.3 megawatts of solar on our closed landfill that we host. We operate, we're in our eighth year of our bulk solar purchase program, Solar Urbana-Champaign, and we're in our third year of our bulk geothermal purchase program, Geothermal Urbana-Champaign. So we're actually, we could throw, it's been a while since we've developed a renewable energy asset at a city facility, but anticipating that in the near future, we can say that we're developing renewable energy in five different ways in this community. The Solar Group Buy is one of our longest-running programs. You see the website here, and there's a video there. That, both the Solar Group Buy and the Geothermal Group Buy are the same program model. We use community education, bulk purchasing, declining block pricing, and mixing all those together into about a nine-month campaign to make it faster, easier, and cheaper to get solar or geothermal renewable energy at homes and businesses. For the bulk solar purchase program, we have, I think it's somewhere around three megawatts of solar we've installed at over 200 properties, and both of those programs are actually three counties-wide. As we started at a one-county scale, but there was so much interest and demand from our neighbors that we've expanded those programs to be three counties-wide. We operate those with nonprofit partners, on the solar side, the Midwest Renewable Energy Association, and on the geo-side, the Geothermal Alliance of Illinois. And it's really those partnerships, those collaborations, that make those programs possible. One aspect of living with the changes we're going to see from global warming is managing a heating city, and so we have a section here talking about how we want to cool the city. One of the most important ways that we cool a city is by building and maintaining an urban tree canopy. The city of Urbana, in the right-of-way, so generally the area between the curb and the sidewalk, we own and manage approximately 11,000 street trees. We have approximately 4,000 vacant tree sites. Those are sites where we have a point geocoded on a map that says this would be a great place for a tree when we're, you know, when we go to plant in the future. One of our challenges is, the best practice in the arbor industry is to proactively cyclically prune your street trees on a seven-year cycle. We are at more like a 12- or 14-year cycle. We don't have enough resources to maintain that seven-year cycle. The outcome there is, we're very limited in how much of those 4,000 tree planting sites, those opportunities for more trees to cool the city even more, we're very limited in our ability to plant those out, because that would be adding more assets to an inventory that we're already not keeping up with the maintenance on. So we need to seek out more resources for that. Other elements of this section, some future considerations. Oh, yeah, yeah, so, you know, urban, one thing that is generally forgotten in terms of being an aspect of sustainability is actually the pattern of development in our cities. When they're walkable, transit-served, tree-shaded, of course, mixed-use, it's a lot easier and a lot more comfortable for people to make a lot more trips by foot, by bike, because those are safe and comfortable modes versus more of an auto-oriented, you know, urban form. And so that's an important aspect that, you know, the comp plan and future changes are going to address. You can see some photos here. We're touching on some of the changes we've made in downtown with this Greenway Development along the Boneyard Creek. We have this beautiful new park space, event space in downtown, where it used to be kind of a barbed-wire, sheet-piled, no-go zone, and now people are invited to be in that space and invited to come downtown. It's a long section. We had a lot to talk about when Lilly was making this. Yeah, I think maybe I'll pause there and take any questions you may have.
Chris.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, Scott. Ignorant dreamer question. Do you foresee the technology getting easier and better, where we could attract what I'll call a green factory, like a production of solar panels that could go to residential homes, and we kind of create, you know, it would be, you know, a for-profit, creating jobs, but also we're, you know?
Yeah, I love that idea. So with our first, and there was an image there of our first landfill solar array, we actually still have a balance of land at the landfill, and we're working with another solar developer to do a second landfill solar array. So these are in the power plant world, these are small, but, you know, when we're talking about acres of solar, it looks big to the normal person, and it's big to me. But in, those are of a scale that we're dealing with national solar developers for those projects, and I always take the opportunity, when I talk to them, to say, "Why in the world would you build a new factory in California?" We have tons of engineers in Urbana-Champaign. We have cheap and abundant land. We have cheap and abundant water. Everything that they need to develop that kind of factory, we have here. So I haven't had any takers yet, but I keep telling that story.
Right, yeah, yeah. I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Grace Wilkens.
Any other questions? Grace?
How do you know? I got, okay, I got concerned and down a tangent when I saw the map of the vacant street trees, and it just showed Stone Creek and Behringer Commons, especially as we've looked at recently a lot of grants and working on street trees and things. And I'm going back, I see the nice tree website in Urbana and our Lumpkin grant application that mapped out all the tree sites. And so just one for myself or anyone else who might see that, that there were, there's lots of other vacant tree sites throughout the city, and that we did consider environmental justice and social vulnerability aspects as we decided where to put those vacant trees, right? And so we're not just pre-filling our most wealthy affluent neighborhoods with these street trees, we are prioritizing based on other factors, right?
Correct. We got a grant from the Lumpkin Family Foundation to study our street tree distribution and our vacant tree site distribution on the basis of both race and income. We did not find any statistically significant correlation between vacant tree sites and race or income, as some other cities have. But we nonetheless took the opportunity to bring in those factors and also bring in satellite surface temperature data. And so now, the last probably two planting cycles, I think, we've been focusing more of our tree plantings on the lowest-income neighborhoods by census and also the hottest individual tree planting sites. So we want to, you know, cool the lowest-income hottest places first and then work out from there and build out our tree inventory from that perspective.
If I can just add too, the neighborhood comparisons, you have to kind of compare neighborhoods of similar development timelines and histories, and so those are two neighborhoods that are both developed or started, developed primarily in the 1990s. So that's why the graph, the chart above it with tree canopy are both ones that started in the late 1800s to the mid 1950s, '60s, where they were filling out, and then the tree vacancies is two neighborhoods that really got their start in the 1990s. Just to compare, like, trees take a time, some time to grow, and so you should compare similar development timelines to neighborhoods.
Mary Alice.
This is all very interesting information. So one thing that struck me is that you said that best practice is to trim our trees every seven years, and we are on a 12- to 14-year cycle. So given that we are basically double, 200% overtime, and we don't have time to plant trees, how many arborists do we have? Do we have three?
We have arboretcs and arbor, I'm going to say assistant, I don't know if that's the right term, and I think it's maybe four total. Kevin Sanderson, the city arborist, and I were discussing this, and I think the last time we talked about it, what we were sketching out was a need for one certified arboretch and a truck, was what we really needed to really get back on track for the maintenance.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? Chandra.
Well, my question was very similar to Mary Alice's, like, if we were to proactively doing anything to kind of make up that time, especially given that things are getting hotter, and we want to do everything to keep the city cooler, use less, you know, AC energy and all of that stuff. So what is the plan to sort of catch up?
Yeah, so I think the immediate need to just maintain is something on the order of one arboretch and a truck. If we're going to envision moving forward and planting out an increasing number of those 4,000 vacant tree sites, there is a point where we'll need another staff person, probably. But that's also a capital improvement, you know, to add more trees than the rate that we're doing now. We've talked about, you know, there are some federal grants, but we don't have capacity to apply for them. So we've talked about, you know, whether we can get a grant writer in some fashion to apply for, manage, and report those federal grants. You know, the application part is challenging in that you may spend a lot of time and then not even win the grant, but the reporting is just as challenging and onerous. And so, you know, adding another grant writer type of position to be able to pursue those grants is one way to get the funding source for that capital improvement.
Any other questions? Grace?
Thank you. One more thought, and I guess my question is if you could just confirm or deny people off the top of your heads, but thinking again about the vacant trees in more recent suburban developments, and that, as I recall, we have recently added that as part of our subdivision rules and guidelines, that for future suburbs that are built out, that the developer will pay for the street trees instead of the city getting left to pay for those for decades afterwards. My question is, right?
That's correct. It's addressed in the subdivision manual practice, is that correct?
Both the subdivision land development code and the manual practice.
Any last comments?
And just to remind everybody where they can find us, you can go to the ImagineUrbana.com website, or you can go to examine.urbanillinois.us. We'll see you next week.
Final chapter, right? Great, thank you very much. Actually, to this, I would add, the city has applied to the U.S. Conference of Mayors for a climate protection award. The organization each year awards two grants, one to large cities and one to small cities our size, to recognize efforts in reducing carbon emissions, increasing energy efficiency, and other climate protection measures. And the best thing about this grant is that it was a total of 500 words, so you had to be doing a whole lot of things that could be described very succinctly, and Scott did. And we applied, and they'll announce the winners at the June meeting in Columbus, Ohio. So hopefully, I think we're well-deserving of that award. Okay, we'll move on to public input. If anyone wants to address the Urbana Council, please come to the microphone. Sure. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Mira Leroya.
Speak into the microphone.
My name is Mira Leroya.
I'm Thea Soria.
And we're both students at the University of Illinois Urbana-Champaign. And as a part of our sustainable engineering class, we spent the semester determining the viability of having a plastic bag tax in the city of Urbana. So for this, we conducted research with, across municipalities across the state, and spoke with city officials about how they successfully implemented a similar tax in their community. And we later used this research to create a proposal for the city of Urbana. Additionally, we also conducted a survey across students on campus to gauge their current plastic bag usage and how they would support a potential tax. So the most important statistic that we found from this was that about 90% of students would be more likely to use a reusable bag if there was a tax implemented, and this is important because this shows that students are plastic bag-conscious, and the most impactful way that we can create a change is if there's governmental ways that students and residents will be more encouraged to use less plastic bags. And this also ensures that students and residents can lead Urbana in a more green direction. So now I'll give it to Thea to talk more about our final proposal.
So based on this on-campus research we conducted, and the average taxes of the municipalities we observed, we recommend a plastic bag tax of five to 10 cents. And one of the main considerations that we took into account in determining this level was wanting to fuel environmental consciousness in the community while also being cognizant of how this would impact those of lower income and those with disabilities, explaining the lower level of the tax. And some other considerations that might want to be addressed include having the tax apply only to businesses of 5,000 square feet or more, which is something that other municipalities had included in their plastic bag tax implementations, and this would help mitigate the economic impact on smaller businesses. And some other ways we believe that the tax could be smoothly implemented include putting out collectible branded reusable bags to also boost economic gain for the city, and also possibly fund other sustainability efforts in the community. And then to further accommodate those of lower income, the city could also partner with nonprofit organizations to donate free bags to those in need. And all in all, we hope that you take our proposal into consideration, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Diane Orr, and I am tonight representing both Ben the Ark Jewish Action, Champagne Urbana, and the Coalition for Progress and Liberation, of which Ben the Ark is a member. Our organizations share a vision to create a just and equitable community where all people are thriving. We'd like to offer our endorsement for the resolution in support of fair housing for all regardless of source of income. While we are concerned about all unhoused individuals and families, we're particularly concerned about the number of school-aged children who are homeless in our communities. Homelessness is not a crime, it's a condition. For school-aged children, which in my definition includes children eligible for preschool who are not included in the usual statistics, the condition of homelessness negatively impacts learning, self-esteem, and the ability to develop relationships, but moreover, it affects cultural security, the right to belong to the community or society that one is living in. Housing is a critical determining factor in a child's social, emotional development. Before the COVID pandemic, the Regional Office of Education reported that more than 500 schoolchildren in Champagne County were homeless during each school year. This past winter, that number fell slightly, but again, this number does not include children ages zero to five. Federal, state, and local governments recognize the problem of homelessness and all of the factors that contribute to this condition. So many families have working adults who earn minimum wage and can't afford even the lowest rents in our community. Government agencies allocate funds for rent subsidy vouchers for these and other workers so that they can be housed, and so that landlords who have apartments to rent can be compensated. To my knowledge, landlords are not being asked to rent at a reduced rate. They will, in fact, be able to accrue funds equivalent to their asking price from both the renter and a reliable government agency. And according to the local tenants' union, the number of vacant apartments in Urbana is almost double the national and state average. As of January 1, 2023, the Illinois Human Rights Act prohibits housing discrimination based solely on source of income, which includes housing vouchers. Under this act, refusal to rent to families who hold vouchers or other rent subsidized assistance is the same as refusal based on other protected factors such as race, disability, age, and so on. I urge the city council to pass the resolution in support of fair housing for all regardless of source of income, to clarify that the Illinois Human Rights Act is a law that landlords must comply with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Esther Pat. I'm speaking with the Champagne Urbana Tenant Union, and I don't really have much to add to what Ms. Orr said, but I do want to just throw out a couple of other statistics to stress to you how very important open housing is. Before the pandemic, in 2019, the city of Champagne was developing the Bristol Place Complex on Market and Bradley, and they opened the waitlist for the 60 subsidized opportunities there for one day, and 600 people applied. That's how great the need is, 10 times the supply. And the section, we're hearing rumor that the housing choice voucher waitlist is going to open soon. When it opened, it was either 2018 or 19, but before pandemic, it was open for 10 days, I think, 5,000 households applied. And if you go to the Housing Authority website, when it explains the waitlist process, it says that they will take all the applications and then do a lottery to see which of the applicants get onto a waitlist, and then they will wait. And there was a little discussion at the Housing Authority about whether they should cut it to 500 of the 5,000 applicants, which is what Lilly Walton suggested, because why give people false hope? But there were so many people who thought, "Oh, no, people are going to be discouraged," so they went ahead and they put 1,500 people on the waitlist. And you could ask her sometime, I don't know the number, but I think maybe a couple of hundred people have been moved through that since then. I don't expect you to solve the whole problem, but I thank you very much for all of the time and attention that you have paid to this subject of discrimination against people with vouchers. I think you all know how important it is that when people do have assistance paying rent from the government, they ought to be able to use it, and you will help make that happen. So thank you all so very much. And I thank your staff, who might feel a little picked on, sorry, but we're getting to a positive place of protecting and helping people, and that's what matters most. Thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the council?
My name is Sarah Nixon, and I'm here to speak about the proposed plastic bag tax program. So I support the initiative to not just reduce, but abolish plastic bags, and this is an issue that I can actually speak to from personal experience and insight, as I am on staff at Salt and Light, where I handle hundreds of purchases, purchase transactions each week at the old County Market supermarket, County Market supermarket building on Philo Road. I interact directly several days each week with a population that will be greatly impacted by a bag tax. So the vast majority of grocery shoppers at Salt and Light, who come to Salt and Light, are local residents, who live within a few blocks, within walking distance to the store, and who live far, far, far below the poverty line. I would estimate that at least 95% of groceries, of food customers, would fit into that category. And again, they have no transportation, they're walking home in all weather, in all seasons. So I hope that the program will not inadvertently harm vulnerable members of our community. I care about every one of them, and that's why I'm here. They're often literally counting their pennies and sometimes have to put items back that they can't afford. So even a five-cent plastic bag tax, without exaggeration, could significantly impact a number of residents. So I look forward to seeing how you will address this real and inevitable, you know, dimension or prob, not potential, real problem. Yes, students could easily afford a tax, and households living comfortably, the majority of, you know, households are going to be very on board with the program, I would guess. But this is, you know, a segment, a subsegment of the community that I really hope will be very carefully considered. And I think creative ways to tackle this could include maybe an education campaign, maybe some posters or like foam core type of displays in the weeks and months leading up to implementing a program. Or waive, this one I would be strongly recommend, waive the tax for EBT cardholders or people on other program, other similar programs. Oh, and also maybe have a campaign, I think the students mentioned something like this, provide free, a supply of free reusable bags. Do that at the checkout counter, not at, like, we all know that if you have them at home, you know, we often leave them at home, same thing is going to happen to, you know, everyone. So have them available at the point of purchase at the checkout location. We recently had a supply of really solid, like hundreds and hundreds of reusable shopping bags that were donated to Salt and Light, which we were selling at 25 cents a bag, and they were fantastic. They are like really sturdy built. The vast majority of people who purchased those, however, were, I would, I don't know if I have the right term, but people who were not necessarily in the category that I just described. And I found that interesting, and I was curious, I haven't asked, I haven't posed questions directly to customers, but the grocery shoppers who I offered them to mostly declined, and I'm not sure if they just don't understand how well-built the bags were or what the reason was. So maybe, I don't know, a gentle educational program, something that someone more creative than me could think up. So yeah, in closing, please include a proven and workable allowance for shoppers who quite literally will not be able to afford a tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council?
This email is from Julie Watkins. She asks it be read during public comment. Thank you for the resolution about source of income discrimination. On the issue of income discrimination in rental housing, I support the idea of finding quote unquote no voucher discrimination in advertisements. If city staff is making choice of, choice of education not punishment, council should direct staff to find landlords that continue to publish discriminating advertisements after notification. If staff is choosing education over taking action, is that staff deciding the three-month window doesn't matter? Considering what was said last week, I agree that three-month window is too short. I agree that, I agree that hard to meaningfully, this probably should say, I agree that it's hard to meaningfully enforce against income discrimination so a complaint can be resolved without losing the voucher and having to start over. Since the three months is not a local decision, we have to do all we can locally to help achieve more voucher successes. I think it's time to start finding discrimination in advertisements when it's not changed upon education or advertisements republished without change. Thank you for your consideration. Julie Watkins, Ward 5.
Any other items to read into the record? Okay. All right, we'll move on to council input and communication. Unfinished business, there is none. Reports of standing committees, there are none.
Hi Diane, I have, I had one thing, sorry.
Oh, yes, James.
I just wanted to make, make the public aware that the Southeast Urbana Neighborhood Association is having its annual meeting on Wednesday, May 24th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at St. Matthew Lutheran Church. The Southeast Urbana Neighborhood Association is mostly Ward 7, but also includes some parts of Ward 6. And so of course, everybody in those areas are welcome to come, and there will be, you know, members of local government that will be there that represent different areas to answer questions for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Chris.
You're probably going to announce it, but tomorrow night is the Barry Dunn event, where the public is welcome to come at 5:30 to Stone Creek, and we're going to be discussing thoughts on public safety. That's 5:30 at Stone Creek.
Stone Creek Church. Yes, yeah, we'll give a little more detail later. Not the golf course. We'll move on to committee of the whole, Mary Alice.
On the consent agenda this evening is ordinance number 2023-05012, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate at 1811 East Florida Avenue and 1106 North Wright Street.
There a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right, on the regular agenda, we have two items. So the first one is ordinance number 2023-04008, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code Chapter 14, Section 14.7 regarding the schedule of fees. On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval.
I'll second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Is there any discussion? Grace.
Just wanted to clarify with some questions that were brought up when this was first brought up, and I appreciate city staff, multiple people answering the question and clarifying that was brought up about the fees for solar installation. And to my understanding, and to share with the public and anyone else who knows better to correct if this isn't right, is that that fee is, will turn out to be less of the current fee, it's just kind of a different structure, but should end up being a little less in the end, just a different structure. And some of my confusion too was on the consumer end, not really being aware of that. And also it was helpful to have clarification that that's something that typically the contractor who's doing the installation takes care of with the inspections and things, so that the consumer would see kind of at the end, but that the contractor is doing the install note to take care of that, and they're the ones who go through that fee. And so this is more streamlined, but should turn out to be the same or a little bit less than the current system, if that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the Committee of the Whole, I move approval for Resolution Number 2023-05033R, Resolution in Support of Fair Housing for All Regardless of Source of Income.
There a second?
I'll second.
That Chandra? Okay, moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Chandra. Before the discussion begins, just want to point out that the changes that you made last week during discussion at the Committee of the Whole meeting were included in a redline version of the resolution. That was provided in the packet that appeared online. It wasn't in the printed packet, but you do have a printed copy in front of you now. Over the weekend, Grace sent out a slight change to the language in the last paragraph beginning now, therefore be it resolved. So that's the only new item that's been introduced. And for the record, I'll read that so that everyone knows what we're talking about here. So the very last paragraph currently reads as propos, well, I'll let Grace make her proposal, I should say.
Is this the right time to?
Yes, if you'd like to.
Move an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, and also some context too, this was, I believe, Mary Alice's original wording last week that I was not understanding, and she had some nice patience going through it with me. So proposed amendment would be as read, should I read the whole, therefore then?
Yes, we have a, we have a resolution on the floor, and this would be the amendment.
Okay, so the amendment would be for the resolution to read, now therefore be it resolved, that the City of Urbana, also what if we just change prohibits, instead of will prohibit, prohibits discrimination in housing based on source of income, including a landlord's refusal to rent to a person solely because of a housing choice voucher or other rent subsidy or rental assistance, rent assistance program, will pay for a portion of the rent, and including a landlord's refusal to comply with requirements to accept such payment, period.
Seconded up.
So we have, we have a motion by Grace and a second by Mary Alice for that amendment.
Can I speak to the motion?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just small wording changes in some sense, what I do think does have the impact was Mary Alice's excellent points, is that we were getting a little too specific with submitting to an inspection or rolling in a program because it might be something else, like she mentioned in COVID, it was just filling out a piece of paper. So this kind of broadens it with whatever requirements, so I think that's important. And then also her suggestion about scratching from a potential tenant kind of resolves the issues from last week, and then also because in a practical sense, that the tenant is rarely the person directly paying the landlord for that payment, that it would typically come through a third party like Housing Authority. So I think the simpler language has also some practical things that make sense.
Okay, any other comments? Chris.
Tonight with the passage of the Source of Income Discrimination Resolution, the City of Urbana reaffirms, reestablishes, and settles the question that in the City of Urbana, all landlords must accept housing vouchers as payment for rent. This has been the case since 1979 in Urbana, and this year has become law of the land in Illinois and in the City of Champaign. During the discussions about this issue over the last two months, we've learned some disturbing things. The Cunningham Township Supervisor has told us that those in need must wait three years for the Housing Authority to open the waitlist for housing subsidies. When the waitlist opens for housing subsidies, it is only open for three weeks, although Esther Pat has now telling us 10 days, and applicants must compete with 5,200 other households for a housing subsidy. Out of the 5,200 households, only 1,500 will be drawn randomly to be eligible for a housing voucher. If an applicant is lucky enough to be one of the 1,500 eligible for a housing voucher, they must wait another three years to actually get the voucher. And if an applicant is really lucky enough to get a housing voucher out of the 1,500, they have 60 days to find housing, or they can ask for another 30-day extension. If after 90 days, the applicant has been unable to find housing, they lose their voucher and must wait another three years to again qualify for a voucher. Mick Wolf, a housing counselor with the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union since 1993, wrote this City Council that he has witnessed for over the past two years, there are many landlords in the City of Urbana who have been openly denying tenants with housing vouchers for years. I myself have attended a recent Zoom meeting with the Champaign County Mental Health Board about homelessness, where the Executive Director of the Champaign County Healthcare Consumers complained to the Mental Health Board that the problem of homelessness in Champaign-Urbana is made worse by the fact that landlords in Urbana do not accept housing vouchers. It is embarrassing to have people talk about my merry old Urbana, the progressive city that can. Clearly, we have a problem, and this resolution tonight is a step forward toward a course correction. As Esther Pat has said, it is not nearly enough, the housing voucher program, but I want to thank Esther and Daniel Chenoweth for helping us to get it right and get back on track. Thank you.
Any other comments? Chandra.
Well said, Chris. I think that this resolution is only like one of the steps. I think we definitely need to look, look, look into more enforcement. As I said before, I think, yes, education is definitely there, and I think we've been educating, and all these meetings we've had thus far is education. And I think it's time for enforcement because enforcement and fines, because the discrimination will not stop unless we stop it. So, thank you.
Grace.
Thanks, want to, I'll just ditto Chris and Chandra and building off, because that was also some of my other thoughts on the actual enforcement piece. And I guess the question would be, and okay, if it's not a, if it needs more time to answer, my question is to executive leadership on if that is the plan to start having more enforcement with fines and legal action, or if we're still pursuing education as the route, and if that would be anything helpful for council to clarify as well. My understanding is that there have maybe been talks about how to structure that, and also just offering, if that's a helpful thing, for council and the public to help establish sometime in the future as well. I'm definitely interested in that.
Any other comments? Mary Alice.
So I just want to thank Grace for being open to altering some of the language in the therefore. I did have an opportunity to talk with Carla about the enforcement portion of it and doing testing, which is what Danielle has talked about, is the testing. So a couple of things I just kind of wanted to give everybody a background on, when Carla first came on to the city, the first thing that the Human Rights Commission asked her to do was to investigate the list that Danielle had provided to the city. And that is, that is what she did. She, she went through and investigated to see if some of those websites still had that language, that language had been taken down, but then she was unable to investigate some of the complaints because it required you to actually like apply. So some of that has been investigated, but the next step here is kind of testing, which is what some people have suggested. I know that when I talked to Carla about this, she just, she's kind of inundated right now, she doesn't really have the time to do that. There are some resources that I think that we should consider as a city. The first one is that when Chris and I went to the Housing Authority's presentation, I believe they're called Fair Housing, so that they do testing in communities, so that is certainly a group that we could reach out to. And I happen to know a faculty member who does research in this. So I'm hoping that we might be able to augment some of Carla's time if we look and be creative in terms of how we can accomplish some testing in the community. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Sharice.
Just to piggyback on what you just said, because something occurred to me while you were, while you were speaking about this. This is a college community, and I really think that we really should start taking advantage of all of the wonderful education that's happening down the street, and maybe inquire also as how we can get some students to do that kind of testing. From U of I that are majoring in planning, or majoring in urban planning, or, or in political science, or history, these would be particular, I think, potential, at least, possibilities and projects that they could do for credit, that they can do for, because I know that we do not have the resources financially and, or staff-wise to try to do that kind of testing. And I think that it would behoove us to actually maybe bring this up to different departments at the University of Illinois and see if there can be some kind of project or internship type of thing that where a student, grad student or otherwise grad students could get some type of credit toward their, their degree regarding this particular thing. This is, the shameful thing is that we have to do it at all in 2023. This is exactly the type of thing that has been done for the past 50 years regarding discrimination in housing. And it's sad that we are having, I guess, you know, it goes to show that when you're trying to stay on top of the justice piece, it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. It's not a sprint and it's perpetual. And it is not something that's going to go away just because we want it to. It's not going to happen. It didn't happen in my parents' lifetime. It's not going to happen in mine, I'm pretty sure. So I, I just want us to stay on top of what other kind of ideas that we can have that would be assisting the city in staying on top of this particular type of issue. So that's all I want to say.
I would add a potential source of assistance might be through the Chancellor's Compact on Racial and Social Justice. They have money as well as to put behind some of these efforts. We haven't had that discussion, but this might be an area that they could assist the city of Urbana and, and Champaign as well. So that's something we can discuss there. But we have, Jaya?
Thank you. So want to echo all the thanks for all the work that went into this resolution. And, and also as we're talking about creative opportunities for enforcing it and the reminder that this is not new for the city of Urbana, that this has been the expectation for a very long time. We have a unique opportunity though, now that it is also statewide expectation. So as we are thinking about enforceability and we're looking at ways of making sure there's adequate resources to address noncompliance, I think it's important to keep in mind the state aspect as well. And just to stress that while this is a first step, it is a step. As has been previously stated, there's a lot more work to be done. And even as we are trying to find creative ways to make sure that enforcement is happening, that it's clear that this council expects for enforcement to happen.
All right. I think we will vote on the amendment first. It's been moved by Grace, seconded by Mary Alice. Do we need a voice vote or a roll call?
Do a roll call, please.
Okay, roll call vote on the amendment.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes and now we will vote on the amended resolution. That was moved by Mary Alice and seconded by Chandra. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That resolution passed unanimously. Thank you all. Okay, we'll move on to reports of special committees. There are none. Reports of officers. Got a few announcements. As Chris mentioned, tomorrow night is the, an activity related to the Public Safety Review being conducted by Barry Dunn. This is going to be held from 5:30 to 7:30 at Stone Creek Church, which is at the corner of Windsor and Race Street. People who are attending are advised to go in door number four, which is the door at the carport. So that's the entrance to use. Secondly, Thursday, May 11th, 6 o'clock. It's a Zoom, a virtual meeting, but the Stormwater Asset Management Plan Meeting will be held. And that's to gain, to provide information regarding the plan and to gain public input. Is that okay on that? And you can find a link to both the Barry Dunn activity as well as the Stormwater Zoom on the city's homepage. I sent a note around to council earlier today, but I wanted to let folks know that the city of Urbana sent in a request for an estimate for the cost of a partial special census to be done in the city of Urbana. This would be to do a census focusing mainly on the census blocks closest to campus. Those were the ones that showed some of the most significant declines between 2010 and 2020. And we think it's, we were certain that it's related to the fact the campus shut down about a week before the census was taken. So we want to try to recapture some of the residents who had most likely left town due to COVID. It'll also help us capture residents in multifamily buildings that were not occupied in 2020. So some of the new projects like the Gather, the 1007 University, the Retreat, and I think we can snake it over to 200 South Vine as far, as well as some other projects. And it will also take into account the residence halls that were closed during 2020 for renovations. So part, half of ISR was empty, which is at 600 or 700 students right there. And Europa House was empty as well. It was undergoing renovation. So taken all together, we are, we have proposed a special census and one complete census tract and then about 42 contiguous blocks. So this step is simply asking the Census Bureau for an estimate of how much it will cost because the cost is entirely borne by the city of Urbana. So it's, it's, we'll make a decision once we know the cost. Secondly, I wanted to give you a heads up. 13 ARPA contracts will be coming to city council next week. I think that's the rest of them. So Will Kolchowski and our JD McClanahan from RPC have been working very, very hard to get this done. And that's good because the sooner this money gets officially committed, the better. So 13 are coming up to council next week. And, okay, that's the end of the list. We'll move on to new business. There is none. And then the last item on the agenda is a discussion item, single-use carryout bag fee. And I believe Tim Cowan is here from Public Works and Scott Tess and Stacy Gloss.
I think Stacy's going to come up and kind of give a little briefing on it.
Good evening. The SAC prepared a little presentation. I don't want the meeting to go very long tonight, but would it be okay if I did five to 10 minutes? Okay. Okay, my name is Stacy Gloss and I'm the Chair of the Urbana Sustainability Advisory Commission. And I am presenting this on behalf of the SAC tonight. Let me see if I can do the present thing from here. You know what? Maybe not. I'll do a PowerPoint instead. Okay. There we go. Okay, it's a very cute presentation. Okay, so this slide just talks about how the SAC was formed in 2008 and gives us the opportunity to advise on priorities related to sustainable management of natural resources, energy and water for the city. In April of 2022, we are aware that city council approved the resolution establishing the mayoral and city council strategic goals, which include a goal to explore a bag tax and a green revolving fund. And then our Sustainability Advisory Commission put together a resolution that we started discussing in December of 2022 to recommend that staff at the city of Urbana explore and draft a proposal to establish a carryout bag fee in the city with the following recommendations and considerations. Globally and nationally, plastic bags are a, are a big problem. Litter is a problem everywhere and in our community as well that leads to clogging of stormwater drains, pollution of local waterways, and collection of plastic bags in trees, also along our roadways and along fencing, especially around, around farms. One of the things that I noted driving to work one day along Windsor Road was that the lawn was mowed along Windsor Road in preparation for the, for the races that we just had here last weekend. And there was so much plastic trash collected in, in those roadways that became really evident once the grass was mowed. We also have a lot of negative environmental impacts. It can take 300 years for plastics to break down in the environment. They don't really go away. They just break down into smaller and smaller pieces that then are, you know, animals and critters then, then ingest. And that is not healthy for them or for us as it's introduced into our food stream. There are other possible solutions. The SAC talked about, you know, oh, should we do something like a plastic bag ban or propose something like that? Agencies, plastic bag manufacturing companies, they also like to say, well, we should do more recycling. Maybe only about five, five to 10% of materials that even get put into our recycling, recycling bins ends up actually being recycled in the first place. So there's certainly a problem with recycling in general in what I, what I think is that prevention of the use of, of, of bags, of plastic bags and, and single-use bags in particular, maybe not just the plastic ones, but anything that's a single use, maybe no longer has a place in our, in our society and that we should be more careful with our resources. So along those lines, we have discussed a, proposing a tax that incentivizes people to make their own, you know, make their own choices at, at the point of sale, whether or not that they need that bag. We think that a bag fee will provide the city with a stream of revenue to fund green projects, can help fund equitable and environmentally friendly alternatives for the people who need them. I appreciated Ms. Nixon's comments about customers at Salt and Light in the community who, who may not be able to afford even just a few cents. That adds extra to the, to the bill as they check out. We think that administration would require low, generally low oversight expenses. The program has been successfully implemented by other municipalities in Illinois that can serve as models. And there's also evidence that proves that, and that shows the plastic bag taxes decrease plastic bag use. There is a, a report from Chicago. There was a, a report that showed that the use of plastic bags went down drastically with the implementation of a tax while also raising funds for other programs. So, so we've discussed, part of our proposal is, or part of the resolution was to consider a 10-cent fee on paper and plastic. I know that that's a different amount than the students presented earlier this evening. I appreciate, I thought they said, okay. That the students presented earlier, so somewhere between five and 10 cents on paper and plastic checkout bags to cover negative impacts of disposable bag use. We also considered that SNAP and WIC recipients should be exempt from this and that we could use the tax to also help fund some biodegradable or other plant-based alternatives. It does look like the SAC calculated based on, based on information available from, from other cities and given the number of people that we have in Urbana. So kind of those back-of-the-envelope calculations would show a low, or a high public response. So many people purchasing those bags would result in a high annual revenue of about $835,000 a year. And I think that this was just reversed on the screen here, but if there was a low public response, that people would, would purchase fewer bags, there would still generate revenue of a little bit over $100,000 for Urbana. I, I wouldn't quote us necessarily on those economics. And I think that an economic analysis should still be, should still be done for the city before, before an ordinance goes into effect. There's a few success stories. Ireland, Chicago, Edwardsville, Illinois. Like to highlight that disposable bag use decreased by 87% within four months in Edwardsville. So it shows that the, the 10 cents per paper and plastic bag tax did incentivize people to bring their own bags. So, next steps. The SAC would recommend that city council or administration works to draft a proposal to establish the carryout bag fee and related ordinance that would go along with that. Our recommendation is to make that cost around 10 cents per carryout bag with a consideration given to allowing the retailers to retain one to two cents for that. Again, I think that these are things that staff would have to research a little bit more and, and figure out what specifically goes into that ordinance. We'd also like to see part of this, maybe a green revolving loan fund that carries, that collects these fees. And then that green loan fund can, can be used to invest in other sustainability-related efforts in the city, whether that's towards increasing capacity of staff within, within the city, adding, adding staff to sustainability efforts or for directly implementing projects. Also using part of the fund to go back into investing in education in the community if that's needed, as well as creating some of the incentives like having available reusable bags at the point of sale early on in the program as people are getting used to the change. So I think that that is about it. I appreciate your time this evening and I'm here for the discussion.
Any technical questions for Stacy? Chris? Mary Alice?
I guess my only question was you had put 10 cents for both paper and plastic. And I'm assuming the reason for paper, because paper is biodegradable, is to encourage people to use non-single-use bags. Is that correct?
Correct. We had discussed at the SAC and I think again that this would be something for, for the city council and for staff to explore further. We know that, that there is also an environmental impact when it comes to the production of, of, of the paper bags. They use more water in, in particular in the production side for producing, for producing a paper bag. So I think that the idea here is that it's really taxing the single-use bags at the point of sale, whether they are paper or plastic. And that was something that was discussed at, at the SAC. Whether or not that is what Urbana wants to implement is, is up to, is up to council and staff to work that out.
Was there any discussion regarding exempting certain businesses or only making this applicable to, to specific kind of businesses?
We did not specify in the ordinance, like whether or not there should be a, this only applies to businesses of 5,000 square feet or more or, or something. I think that we, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but I don't believe that we addressed that. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah, just a couple of observations on how plastic bags live in my world. Where there's abolition, like Aldi's, it changes our behavior. We show up with reusable bags. If we do get plastic bags, like at Schnucks or other places, it gets, those get used to walk the dog, if you know what I mean. And I guess my question to you is, have you kind of talked to retailers as to how they feel about the tax? And would it, would it be on them to collect the tax and pay the city?
It would be on the retailers to, to collect the tax at the point of sale. So, you know, at the checkout counter, at the register, if, if you're using a bag, then they would have to charge for that bag. And then, you know, the city collects taxes.
But you haven't surveyed retailers, how they feel about it?
The SAC did not survey retailers.
Okay.
Grace?
The question, point of clarification too, because the SAC resolution does say five to 10 cents range, right? So I don't know that we decided 10 cents as a hard thing, that the resolution is five to 10 cents, I think.
Thank you for that clarification, Grace. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Grace?
I have questions more to the staff memo, if this is the appropriate time for that?
Well, not quite yet.
Okay.
I'm just going to make sure we gave Stacy a, Sharice, did you have a question?
Just very quickly. With...
Just very quickly, with, with a change like this, it's not, not everyone is going to be able, or not everyone is going to be able to switch over that quickly. What is the recommended time that you have as a probationary, like we won't charge you for plastic bags for three months or six months or blah, blah, or, you know, something like that? Or is there a probationary time that you have in, in mind to allow people to make that
I don't recall discussing that as part of the SAC. We hadn't considered a probationary period or a ramp up.
I'm just thinking in terms of, I know I, I lived in Los Angeles for a very long time and they went like every store. They had plastic bags there, but basically you had to bring your own. And they gave like a three-month probationary time to, before they actually started charging. But one thing that they always kept upfront, whatever retailer would keep something upfront that would be a reusable bag, usually canvas, bag that a person could purchase in lieu of getting the plastic bag. Because, oh, I just, you know, they forget, I think I ended up with like five or six bags before I finally, it snapped, you know, became a regular thing when I went to the grocery store to take my bags with me. So I, I think that, that's something that needs to be considered. That, you know, it takes 21 days to drop a habit, or at least to get to a point where you don't need it so much. I would think that at the very least, this, if, if, if we're going to do this, that it should also be something that's put in place regarding, people just remembering to bring their bags with them. I, I don't go anyplace without my bags. It became such a habit with me that even here in Urbana, I'd take bags with me. But coming back to Urbana, what I also fell back into the habit of was using plastic bags, you know, when I could. So it's, I'm just speaking from both sides of that, you know, that chaos thing, that way that could happen, so.
Any other questions or comments for Stacy? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, SAC. Staff? Did you want to follow up on the memo?
Sure. I'll just highlight some of the things from the memo. I think the idea is that being as this is already a council goal, it's already a semi-directive for staff time. I think it's more of just trying to talk back to the priorities of those council goals and completion of those and expected timelines. Really it comes down to logistics for us is if we're going to start funneling efforts into the exploration of this, we have to funnel them away from something else because we don't have available resource time. Scott would be the person doing this. He's running our bulk solar, bulk geothermal, community solar, overseeing recycling, a slew of other things that I probably couldn't list them all off the top of my head if I wanted to do. But the idea would be, is if we're, if the idea is that we want to prioritize this over getting other council goals done or other existing services that we're doing, we need to talk about what we want to compromise on to do that because, and, and really I just wanted more clarification as to what the expectation is out of this, this effort. Because if we're talking about high-level, back-of-the-envelope analysis, that's a much smaller effort that may not have to suck a bunch of finance and accounting time into it. But if we're talking about doing more of that, doing more financial analysis of things, that's going to pull some finance and accounting time that we'd have to talk with the finance department about. If we're going to talk about community engagement, that's a whole other piece of this that takes a lot of time to do. And then just, you know, what are the expectations of the, the use of these funds? The one thing, and it doesn't have to be that we are turning a profit per se on this, but if we're on the low end of these estimates, just extra administration from finance, accounting, public works to administer and collect these fees, if it's 100K, we may not, it may be like a wash as far as money goes and we may not have a green revolving fund per se, but it may still affect change in use of plastic bags. That's all kind of dependent on the economic analysis. So, you know, most of this memo is just asking the council, you know, this is our, this is on our list. It's, it's, you know, further down the priority and it's contingent upon resource availability, which we don't have right now. So if we want to push it faster, then we need to talk about, do we want to prioritize it over something else or do we want to talk about compromising some other services that we're currently providing?
Grace?
Thanks so much for that input, Tim. Some of my questions slash also answers to you. My answer for your question and your first point about the, oh, no, maybe one of your questions, the point about what's the goal here? The reducing bags, environmental impact or generating revenue? And my answer is yes, all of them. I think they're all important and they all play in, so I don't, I don't see the need to necessarily choose one, besides as you said, when we're weighing the financial outcomes, which I don't recall where we got those first numbers. I know we had some other previous student classes that helped with some of those calculations. When I did a quick Google search, Google says that the average US person uses about 300 bags per year. If we thought about 40 people in Urbana, 10 cents per bag, that would be 1.2 million in annual revenue. With the reduction, we expect like 40% reduction in bag use in Chicago, or actually 60% reduction if we looked at those figures. 40% bag use would still be 480 grand a year. So I don't remember where we got those numbers and if it was based on five or 10 cents or how many bags people use, but I think that brings up the point too about, you know, I definitely think it's worth looking into it more and seeing about the revenue stream, the environmental impact and changing people's behavior and awareness. Also, the thing about the goals, I think we have different opinions and I was maybe just in the minority on this, but I never liked the idea of it being in that kind of order where it's one and then two and then three and we can't start on three until one or two are finished, especially when one or two are big things that are going to take years. It just seems like then we can't start on this third thing, which is completely independent of things one and two that are going to take a long time to finish. So I am in support and have been this whole time in not going strictly by that order, especially in our infrastructure goals and with this one in particular. So this is one that I'm absolutely in support of bumping up and I feel like I can't quite weigh that decision about what do we have to sacrifice if it comes down to a one or the other thing? So I'm curious what those sacrifices would be if we were to do this. It's kind of hard to tell now, you know, what other things that Scott is doing currently, would he have to cut back on in order to do this? And I don't have that information at this time, but I would definitely like that information and able, in order to make this decision. Because I think this is really important if we're going to push being sustainable, being accountable. Also those 300 bags per person per year in Urbana comes to 12 million plastic bags in Urbana if we're going by that in a year. So I mean, huge environmental impacts and huge potential for revenue. So I definitely support looking into it more.
Chandra?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Grace. Like I think this should definitely be reviewed by staff as for feasibility and, you know, implementation-wise. I appreciate Stacy giving us all this information as well. Right, we can't say stop doing something and look into this when we don't know what that something is. I think you're asking us for, asking questions of us and I think we're asking questions of you as well. So like what do we have to, to swap off in order to, to get this going? I think as this is a discussion, I think we need to continue to discuss this, maybe like we did with before, like come back in a couple of weeks or a month and give us, you know, some, some input about estimates and how implementation would look with staff time and all of that stuff, so we can make a proper determination whether this is something that we really want to pursue.
Chris?
So Tim, I guess another question I'd throw on your stack is, can you give us any estimate or sense of how much the plastic bags are clogging the system? Like the clogging the drains or messing with your infrastructure and how often is your, are your people having to deal with these darn things? And would that be, could that be factored into the cost analysis? Like if we had less of that going on, we would, you know, keep things from getting flooded or that kind of thing?
Just speaking to that one specifically, I would say that that's probably a negligible amount of our staff time is dealing with it. It's more of an environmental nuisance to us. Most of these, yes, they will clog inlets and things like that. We had Boneyard Creek Community Day a few weeks ago. We collected a bunch of these down through that whole section of Boneyard Creek. You know, they're out there. They're not necessarily causing the impediment of flow that is something that's quantifiable or significant, I would say. But environmentally, you know, they're out there not, not degradating, so.
Mary Alice?
So just my two cents. The first one is, is that I think I would prioritize changing behavior over financial impact. It's always nice if we get money, but to me, the big thing is to change the, change the behavior. I've seen this implemented in, in many, many different communities. My family lives in the Bay Area. This has been in, in place for a long time. They keep bags in their, they never used reusable bags until they started charging them and my dad is cheap, so he's got a lot of them in there. So I wanted to give that comment. The other comment that I wanted to say was, I feel like this is only part of the conversation because finance would play a really big part in any implementation and we're going through budget right now. So if we want an update in terms of what staffing resources would be required, I strongly suggest we don't do that until the end of July or beginning of August to get through the budget season. But, so those are, those are my points.
And that's a fact. Yes. Because this is, this is as much a finance question as it is an environmental question in terms of implementation. So. Jaya?
Yeah, I think that, that timing is important, but it's also an opportunity to make sure it's in the budget, right? As we're considering costs that might be associated with moving forward on this. I think we have a lot of really good information, both from the students who did a lot of research on this, as well as this, sorry, the SAC, just say that, to show the benefits, right? And a number of us have lived in communities that already have these bag taxes and we see the impact on behavior. You know, this is a community that prides itself on being focused on sustainability and green initiatives and I think this is low-hanging fruit. I understand there's plenty of work that comes with that, but I think I'm still in favor of moving forward. I think we need more information on what, what are we talking about delaying, right? I don't, I think, again, we don't have all the facts, but when we're looking at those bigger initiatives, I would agree with Grace that it doesn't make sense to wait two or three years to even start on something that should be easier to roll out, especially because a lot of the legwork in terms of research and assessing the benefits of it have already been done for us.
I just wanted to follow up on one thing is, you know, I, I think the, the big thing is, what I'm hearing is, you know, really doing a little bit more of an economic analysis tied to this thing. We don't know what resources it's going to take without knowing the scale of what the expectation of this is. If the answer is we want to do an economic analysis to see what do we, you know, let's true up some assumptions that have been made on this stuff, you know, true up some kind of high-level staff planning for what it's going to take to administer this. It could be a half FTE, it could be a full FTE depending on what all this takes to do. And then how does the revenue compare to that to see? Are we committing to something to change or are we committing to that, that's going to change and develop revenue for more green infrastructure? Or are we going to commit to something that is really just a commitment to change and it's, it's kind of a wash financially for the city? So it, it sounds like the economic analysis is the first component of this, high-level stuff. You know, and that's some of my clarification. You know, if you're talking about community engagement and proposed uses and everything like that, the staff time goes up for that type of stuff. So if we get clarification that it's, we really want a, a high-level economic analysis to true up some of the assumptions, that's something else. But again, I'd go back to Mary Alice's comment on the finance and accounting, we got to get them engaged on that and find where that fits into their schedule or are we compromising something else they're offering in lieu of those things? So, you know, I'm always a big supporter of getting more revenue to do more things for the city. I think there's a need for that stuff. You know, just trying to find where this fits into the priority of, of everything else that we, we've got going on is the hard part. And i- if we can define the scale of what the expectation is of this effort, then we can better define what the resources needs are for that. You know, are we going to need 80 hours of finance, accounting time and 40 hours of Scott's time to dig into this stuff to get to something that gets us to the next step? Or are we talking about a full-scale community engagement survey of, you know, establishments, all of that stuff? And that's some of the clarity that we're looking for here so that we can better inform you of, if you're asking for 120 hours, here's 120 of hours of things that we do now that you guys could tell, that we feel are lower priorities, that you guys could tell us, yeah, do this over that. But if you're talking about something that's an 800-hour effort, it's, we can invent that, we just need more resources at that point or we have to commit to a longer timeline.
I'd also think, I, I think in trying to do the assessment of what the staff time commitment would be, I think it would be helpful to understand what the council's expectation about community engagement is, because it's not only, you know, engagement with the residents and so forth, but it's with the business owners and, and just trying to understand the logistics of, of their implementation of it. So any thoughts about what your expectations are there so that we can plan accordingly?
Grace?
I'm trying to understand your question, expectations as far as public or I guess outreach to the retailers themselves ahead of time?
Yes, I think Chris asked Stacy, you know, have you done any survey outreach to the, to the business owners? And, and that hasn't been done. And, I mean, I'm taking for granted that you, that's part of the engagement that you're looking for, that, because they are going to have to have a role in this. So what is your expectation? Are, are you thinking that this is going to be only for the large retailers? Are you, I, I lived in the District of Columbia. It was only for food. It wasn't for everything. So I don't know, and, and so then it, the implication is much broader if you're going for everything. So what can, what, what guidance can you give us about how broad this engagement with the business community might need to be?
Does it apply to carryout orders from restaurants that scale or are you talking about supermarkets?
All great questions. And Stacy, what you said was that usually the collection of the tax is at the point of sale, right? And I don't know how exactly the money gets transferred to the city and what kind of staff time that takes, but also the scope of the tax, like are we going to do restaurants? Are we going to do retail? Are we going to do just food? Are we going to do grocery stores, you know? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Chandra.
So I, I'd like the idea of, you said 5,000 square feet or, or larger retailers. I'm from Chicago and so they did first just grocery stores, that sort of thing, but they've since expanded to like Walgreens and CVS, like those even smaller places. So I think like initially we can start, you know, with maybe just stores according to their square footage. And I think to answer your question, in our research, Grace, or something, I, I heard that the, the tax is on the retailer when they buy the bags in bulk. So if they're buying 5,000 bags, they're getting charged the seven cent on that $5,000 and then they pay the city. And, and they sort of, I guess, get those, their one to two cent back at the point of sale and the rest goes to the city.
Go ahead, Grace.
Thank you. I like that idea of Chandra's of ramping it up, kind of starting with large grocery stores. I mean, if we could start with the big, major retail chains, that would be, you know, potentially the idea is that that's your big volume to start with some economy of scale, kind of like we did with compost and food scrap and all sorts of things. If we start with the big ones, with the largest number of bags in the fewest places, that's the easiest. And then ramp up, maybe add smaller ones from there. And also I would say too, that these are all really great questions and I think that it's also a kind of a bigger complicated thing for the community to think on and I'm not prepared to answer all of this tonight. And even in our months of conversations with SAC and doing research, that these are really big questions, that are very good, important questions, that I think that's also part of, you know, this recommendation from SAC was to look into it more, that there's still a lot of things to be figured out. So I like the idea of ramping it up and, yeah, the retailing tax working on the wholesale and then also the retailer is kind of responsible for getting that tax. So like if they're not monitoring and they're letting people just take the bags without charging their tax, the retailer is the ones paying that in a sense because they've already paid the city tax when they bought those bags in the first place. And as far as the scope of like a full study and public outreach and things, I think we had kind of talked about in a practical sense, some was and things, I think we had kind of talked about in a practical sense, some with Scott too, that, you know, we understand the limitations of the city. Also, as Stacy mentioned, that, you know, we might not have such a nice, full study unless we have some partnerships, as we talked about with the U of I or with some other groups in town that might be interested in that kind of impact assessment or economic analysis to help us out there. I think the main thing in my mind would be focusing on the operations of how do we actually do this to reduce the number of bags, rather than focusing too much on what's the economics and what would be the impact. I think that's important to have an idea of, but I wouldn't want that to hinder us from actually putting it into action, I think is the most important thing. And I had other questions, thoughts. I'm kind of confused because as we're talking about all the challenges of instituting something like this, we've also got pulled in for meetings about looking for the city to potentially increase revenue streams. And we've talked about potentially adding taxes for alcohol and cigarettes and things like that. And I'm just not understanding why this seems to be treated so differently, that it's like, that seems like a really big undertaking too, to tax all the retailers who sell alcohol and cigarettes or any kinds of nicotine things. That seems like just as big of an undertaking as plastic bags to me. And I feel like the, the treatment and the way of addressing it is going differently.
So just to, just to address that point, I think that the way that we were presenting the information about revenue options was really just, is, is a given revenue option a low administrative cost. So are we increasing a tax we already collect low? You're just increasing the amount? We already have the sort of transactional mechanism in place? Or is it more complicated? And so something like cigarettes, which is widely sold, lots of retailers, that was just given a, that, that's a relatively high barrier. We weren't advocating for anything. We were just sort of putting a marker down, this is easy, less easy, hard. So now we're actually talking about implementing a specific thing. And so then you get into the, well, what's involved in that? And we don't, we don't know. We're talking about exploring it. So I don't see these things as inconsistent. So hopefully that helps.
Diane, if I could make some comments at this point. I, I do want to say that, you know, I'm supportive of this concept, and I, and I know it's, it's being done in a lot of communities around the country. So large retailers, as we were talking about, starting up with, have the capabilities with their point-of-sale systems to do something like this. But I think both Chris and Mary Alice kind of touched on the things that I feel are important as a goal, which I heard early on, you know, what are we trying to accomplish with this? We're not going to accomplish revenue with this. There, there's going to be revenue, but it's, it's a, it's a disappearing revenue. If the, if what we do is successful, so Mary Alice's change her, change of behavior, the number of bags that are going to be taxed is going to go down dramatically. I think, I think Chicago was 50%. There's other examples of 80% to 90% reduction in bag use. And so, you know, looking at how many bags are being used right now and pulling a number out and saying, oh, it's going to be $1.2 million, that doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. And, and it, it's kind of like the early discussions about hybrid vehicles. You couldn't, you couldn't justify buying a Prius and, and just on the basis of the gas you were going to save in 2005, 2006. You had other reasons why you were doing it. Sure, you saved on gas and, but the cost of the vehicle was higher. And if you look at the, you know, the footprint of the manufacturer of that vehicle and the batteries, you, you can't, you can't say that it's a pull-up win, but you can turn around and say, the exhaust is non-existent. It's low E or almost non-existent exhaust. So there are other reasons why we want to do this. The behavior is a reason why we do this. I think Chris is spot-on. It may be a nuisance, but it, but it's a noticeable nuisance that there's too many bags around and they end up all over the place. And reducing the usage of them, you know, 80, 90%, would reduce how much, we end up having to look at them, and people have to pick them up and, and take them out of drain pipes. That might be, not be a big thing. You may not be able to make an economic argument on that, but it is, it is a win. I'm not, I'm not convinced that the, the bag, the bag wars are a win from a, a green footprint standpoint. There's conflicting information on how much you save by not having those bags in the waste stream versus how much the tote bags and the other options like paper bags impact the overall environmental areas. But it, but there are enough good things that we could accomplish by this, but I think it's worth pursuing it. Let's just not try to make this an, an economic victory. It, it's not going to be that. The more it succeeds, the less it's bad. Let's try to make sure that it doesn't create a, a burden if we can, a cost if we can. Let's help it pay for itself. I am, I am, you know, if you want to look at economic or environmental impact, I'm almost more concerned about the, the use of styrofoam and, and carryout. I mean, that's much more costly to make, much more damaging to the, to the environment, harder to deal with in the waste stream than the grocery bags that we have now. People will buy more bags from the, from the back of the aisles, the hefties and what have you, because they're using, we call them single-use bags, but people do use them for other things that will, they will, they will still need to take care of those things. They still need to bring those into the waste stream. So I, I am supportive of us looking at it. I do think it merits some involvement. I do appreciate the research and the presentations that we have been shared with this, but let's not try to pretend it's going to be an economic benefit that it isn't. There may, there are plenty of right reasons to do this, and, and, you know, looking at huge amounts of funding is not one of them.
Jaya and Chandra.
So I think just from what I'm hearing from everyone, it sounds like there's some more information council needs, but then also some questions that staff have. And so maybe if we can try to compile those and get feedback on them. I also know this came out of a conversation from the university students. And so I think, thinking about, as we're talking about, what kind of additional next steps might need to take place, let's loop the university back in and think about, how do we do this collaboratively, collectively as well, right? So that we don't get stuck on just, you know, there are so many logistical pieces, but I think we need to, to look at who needs what additional information so that we can continue to move this forward. I don't, how frequently does the SAC meet?
Once a month.
Once a month?
Typically once a month.
Once a month.
About 10 times a year.
So I think maybe even using that as a timeline, right, of like being able to have the SAC go back and say, this is the feedback we got, make sure that information, and this is just one suggestion, right? Because I think, yes, folks are busy, we're at that budget point, but I, I meant it seriously too, of if we're talking about investing in this project, that that needs to be taken into consideration for the budget as well. So whether it's, you know, in time for the next, next SAC meeting or a shorter time period, I think getting that clarification from the city on what specifics do you need to know? And is there consensus, right? I don't know that there is consensus from the council of, of what the parameters of, you know, public, you know, engagement should be or, or any of that. So getting clarifications on what questions the staff have, and then getting clarifications too for questions council might have.
Would anyone have an objection to starting the conversation by looking at the larger 5,000-square-foot or 7,000-square-foot retailers as a starting point? Because I have a feeling if you're talking about some parts of the population, there's more plastic going into carryout, takeout service than there is shopping at a supermarket. So, but anyway, okay, we'll start with the larger retailers. Starting point. Chandra, did you have something?
Yeah, I was going to say, as it relates to the public engagement, education would be the biggest. I think outreach and maybe the most, I don't know, time-consuming, I guess, because it'll need to be sort of a, a campaign before if it goes into effect. So I think, you know, that's the, the community engagement part that, that I see being heavy.
Grace?
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with connecting and things too. And I also wanted to say to some of our U of I students in the audience too, emails us at city council email, and then we can have yours and stay in touch as well. I only have contacts with one instructor and one previous student, so I'm also happy to have any other connections. And we've got city council email to email all of us for any awesome class things that you guys have going on and want to be a part of. We can definitely use some help, as you can see. And so can I also just clarify, because I appreciate that Diane clarifying that looking at, so starting with large retailers, and you're saying having staff kind of look into what that would take, and then we can loop back around on this at a later date for an update? Is that what you're saying? Or I guess I'm still, because I'm still not sure if we're still deciding on if they're going to look into it, on what sacrifices that requires, or if they're saying, okay, we'll look into it just a little bit and come back to you with what else it would take. I don't know if you could just clarify where you're thinking we stand on that and what kind of timeline?
I'm getting the sense that there is support on council for doing this. The question is the, the, the scale. Who's going to participate as far as the retailers to start with? Also, what are the trade-offs? And so that, if you're going to start evaluating what are the trade-offs, it means you have to have somewhere to start in terms of the scale of this program. Dealing with 10 large retailers is a lot easier than dealing with 1,000 small businesses. So there's that to think about. If you're including all the bars, if you're including all the, the drugstores, if you're including all these small, locally-owned businesses is another thing. So, but if we had a starting point of the few larger retailers in town, that would at least give us some information. And I'm just thinking off the top of my head here.
I think, I think what we can, what we can do to sort of move it forward is, there's certain baseline things that are going to have to happen, and we can give, you know, we can get whatever estimates we have. And then to the extent we go, look, we've got, I'm, I'm going to make up a number, so nobody quote me on this. Let's say we have 20 chains, and we go, what if we went after the, the big chains? And so we have that versus a much bigger number of small businesses that are more locally owned. And we said, okay, for that, that effort, this is what we think the staff time commitment is. And then go from there. And you go, okay, we agree with that. Or no, we don't. We want a big, broad thing, then we'll go back. But just to start, and, and we'll make some, I'll say, proffers of what the scope should be, just to keep it more manageable on the staff's side, and then just to keep the conversation going.
It'd be nice to get actual information about habits of people in this community. I always hate to apply examples from other cities to our population. We don't know. The thing is, we don't know. So, Mary Alice.
The other kind of positive to using some of the big retailers as our testing ground is, they all operate in these communities that we're talking about. They've done this, right? Walmart's done this, Meyer's done this, Schnucks has done this. So they, they know how this works. So that's the really low-hanging fruit. When we get down into the restaurants, that's going to be really challenging. But maybe the pharmacies, I mean Walgreens and CBS and all those are operating in all these communities that we're talking about. So starting with having kind of these larger stores, then maybe migrating down to a smaller size, but somebody who already has experience, before we try and even tackle all of the businesses that are going to be really challenging, I think is a good strategy.
Charisse.
I agree with what Mary Alice, I was, this was exactly what I was getting ready to say. And, but the, the other thing is this, is that with the comparison or the, the parallel that, that we've been making about other communities and what they did, we may want to also look into what their ordinance did, or look into how they organize, organize, organized these particular, these same particulars. And, and that can be our stepping stone as, as well. That can, that can also help us get organized regarding the same thing. Regarding the other, you know, having lived in, in a community that, that did that, it did start with, with the, the retail, the grocery stores. And little by little, it rolled into smaller businesses. Some smaller businesses actually never, there was a different, I think there was a different tax regarding that, because they were small businesses. It was, had, had to do not necessarily with square footage, but how many people came through the door as much, I think. And, because I think some small businesses were actually exempt, because they didn't, they just didn't use plastic bags that much, you know. It is, and it, and it's something that, that I, I think we would actually gain more information by asking another municipality that has done this, what entailed, what they did, what steps they chose. So it's, it's all only good for us to talk about these other municipalities, but we can need to also, I think, get information from those municipalities and see how, how they rolled out, or, and how much, and maybe even get a cost estimate. All of those things can, are available to us if we just ask.
Grace?
One last thing. If I could just restate my question about when we would like to touch base on this again. I didn't know if maybe like a month would be maybe a reasonable amount. I think it was important, Jaya's point about, I hear Diane's point about, you know, finance department being busy with the budget until then, but I also hear Jaya's point about, well, if we are going to have any planned funds for this, that would be something good to know before the budget, that if it comes back and you say, we need a full-time or a half-time person added under sustainability office to be able to do this, I would move and support that for this budget. And then, you know, we could do it afterwards, but council can't initiate a budget amendment. So unless it comes from exec, that's not a possibility. So I would be curious before the budget, if possible, if there would be a tangible fee, like a charge for the city that we would need to plan for in the budget. And I don't know if that's a reasonable kind of look into at time or not.
But we can still make a budget amendment if, if it's so needed. If we end up with a part-time person or a full-time person, that, whether or not, to me, not getting it right as much as, as possible as is being rolled out is more important than whether wondering or worrying whether or not we're doing it in time for budget time. Because budgets can be amended. So we can amend the budget to, to include all that. I don't see anything wrong with that either. I don't think of a this or that. I think of the this and that. We can do it either way. I think it would, it would work either way.
That's what you're asking. My comment was that council cannot initiate a budget amendment.
No, we can't. But we don't, I'm just saying, is we can always initiate and say, well, it looks like we might need somebody full-time. So that's why we have the finance people.
So would a month suffice to bring, to bring back some information?
We'll, we'll get you something in a month, and it might be that we can't get finance, we can't get their attention, and so we'll have to deal with it that way. And then we'll all be dealing with it in real time when, when the budget gets passed, because, I mean, we'll have to decide, it's about resource allocation at that point. And we're, we are in the throes of that now. So if there's going to be decisions made about adding, it may be come at the, at the expense of something else, just like our time. So we'll, we'll get an assessment and bring it back. And that assessment might be when, when in the future we can tell you, or the assessment might be, here's the number of hours we've estimated, and that equals, you know, some fraction of an FTE or whatever. So we'll, we'll continue the conversation in about a month. And, but I'm not promising what that, what feedback you're going to have at that point. But we'll, we'll try to give you something substantive.
Grace?
Just one more thing. Stacy, thank you for this. Thank you for the information and everything. You've been hearing us go back and forth and all this, but this is great. I thank you very much for all the, the work that you put into this, and I really appreciate the, the time and the effort that it may take for us to even think about, to even get around to implementing this. This is a, I think it's a, a great thing to think about. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. And if you have any questions that should be directed back to the SAC, we meet the first Tuesday of the month, and we won't be meeting in July because of the July 4th holiday. But, but we could try and get some answers.
But we could try and get some answers back to City Council if necessary.
Thank you very much. I think we have enough to work on. Turn the page. Yes. With no further business before this meeting, we are adjourned.